Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025. Would a clerk please take the role?
Mr. Charland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle President.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Four members present.
Missen. We will try to contact the fifth member. Okay.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you very much. For those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next is their motion to amend the agenda.
To move.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda has been amended. We will hold on proclamations for the moment and we'll move to public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, order of liberation, which may be before City Council, preventing will not be permitted. Once you are called, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Stuart Baller.
Good morning. My name is Stuart Baller and I'm from Swissvale. I'm a nine-year Air Force veteran and a full-time student at Pitt where I'm majoring in Environmental Studies. I'm here to comment on the Oakland DIY Skate Park. I came to Pittsburgh in 2021 after I separated from the Air Force and I immediately fell in love with the city. What grabbed my attention were the parks and the opportunities for outdoor recreation. At the time, I was a mountain biker, but I never really felt like I fit into that community. And as a transplant in Pittsburgh, I was desperately seeking friends. That's whenever I discovered skateboarding and the Oakland DIY. For skaters, the Oakland DIY is not just a skate park, it's a sanctuary. One where they meet new people, enjoy the outdoors in the beautiful Shenly Park, and a place where they can truly be themselves. This comes with the abundance of benefits for physical and mental health that outdoor recreation brings. You may not know this, but the Oakland DIY is a Pittsburgh staple. It gained international attention this summer when the Volcom Professional Skate Team made a point to visit this skatepark and was featured in Thrasher Magazine. This park is owned by the city and it's a park for all people, not just for one demographic. Skateboarding is the most inclusive hobby because your age doesn't matter, nor does your race or gender identity. It's about your skills and your dedication. Saying that this park is shameful implies that the people who use it are undesirable. And this further ostracizes a group that have been negatively stereotyped. In reality, these skaters, rollerbladers, and bikers use this park as a safe place to commune, express their creativity, and exercise in a non-traditional manner. This skatepark is open to everybody and it creates more renown for Oakland and Pittsburgh. Instead of trying to shut this park down, it should be expanded upon. Making this an official city of Pittsburgh Skate Park would display the city's commitment to inclusion, outdoor recreation, and the health of its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tyler Jacobs. Tyler Jacobs. Our next speaker is Michael Johnson. Our next speaker is Rory Kraft. Our next speaker is A.J. Haddon.
Hello, everyone. My name is A.J. Haddon and I serve as the lead of operations at the Oakland DIY Skate Park. First, I want to thank everybody for being here today. The very fact that we're having this conversation just shows how much of an impact this skatepark has made on the city of Pittsburgh. I also want to thank every single person who has contributed to building this space. What started as a grassroots effort has grown into something recognized across the country, not just by skateboarders, but also by park enthusiasts, construction professionals, and countless others. Our most recent Instagram posts highlighting our fight to preserve the Oakland DIY has reached over 137,000 views. Prove how far our message has spread. As a senior mechanical engineering student at the University of Pittsburgh, this park has given me the chance to bring my education to life in a meaningful way. Combining engineering, construction, leadership, but more importantly, it has taught me about community. I may get a priority to meet everyone who visits and what stands out, most is the respect that people have for the space and the neighborhood. We've built something people want to protect. Our mission is simple, to create an inclusive space where skateboarders, rollerbladers, BMX riders, and scooter riders can grow their skills, connect with others, and contribute to something bigger than themselves. Because riders help design and build the park, they leave their mark on it. That ownership fuels creativity, strengthens community, and makes the park a destination for visitors across the country. What makes this place truly special is the effort behind it. Every concrete pour brings anywhere from 10 to 40 volunteers, people of all backgrounds, professional concrete workers, masons, carpenters, and others step in not only to help build the park, but also to teach, passing down skills to the next generation. The park isn't just a skatepark, it's a classroom, a workshop, and a gathering space. It's also important to acknowledge the history of where we stand, Panther Hollow. This is a community with a deep Italian heritage and we want to honor that legacy as we move forward. One of our goals is to install a park sign that not only outlines the rules of the space, but also commemorates the history of Panther Hollow and guides visitors to learn more about it. Beyond skating, we envision features like a bocce ball court, goggleball pit, swing set, and more, making this a park for everyone. Our goal is simple but powerful, to work together to create a space the entire community can use and be proud of. With your support, Oakland DIY and Panther Hollow can become one of the most beautiful, inclusive, and meaningful public spaces in Pittsburgh. For anyone who wants to learn more, I'd be happy to talk with you after the hearing, or you can reach me by phone or email. Thank you so much for your time in believing in what the community can build together. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ryan Jaffay.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hello, my name is Ryan Jaffay and I'm a resident of Squirrel Hill South, District 5. I graduated from Pitt Law in May and during my bar preparation, I decided to return to skating to relieve stress and provide a space to ground myself, pun intended, during the process. The Oakland DIY Skate Park is a beautiful place created by and cared for by people who love this city. As a member of the community, I believe that we should have spaces that both adults and children can foster community, growth, and mutual respect for the space we inhabit. Every time I have been to Oakland DIY, I have come across people from all backgrounds, from kids with their grandmothers learning to scooter for the first time, to other college students who have been in skating their whole lives, and older skaters looking to get into the hobby for the first time. Oakland DIY is a great place to meet other like-minded individuals in the area, or just to learn how to skate. I've been to numerous skateparks throughout the Pittsburgh area and not encourage community involvement quite like Oakland DIY. There is a level of ownership that people have in this park that has allowed it to become as successful as it is. It's become a beacon of light in an era of isolation from our work, school, and social media. We talk about people being more isolated and alone than ever, but fail to provide spaces that encourage community and engagement with the city around us. I hope by speaking up today, I can in some way help those that have put in so much work to create a skatepark that caters to beginners, intermediate skaters, and even pro-level skateboarders that have graced Oakland DIY. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Max Gonzalez.
Hi there. My name is Max Gonzalez. I'm actually a part of the Pittsburgh 2050 Comprehensive Plan for the Community Working Group. I'm also a research fellow for the University of Pittsburgh's law offices and I'm a graduate of Carnegie Mellon University. I currently live in the Garfield-Bloomfield area and I am a community activist and put on tons of community events. And honestly, I'm incredibly impressed by what has gone down at Oakland DIY as a community effort and the amount of outreach. And honestly, A.J. has done an amazing job taking on the reins of this. In my opinion, this is an incredible opportunity for cross-cultural collaboration. One thing I want to share with you, just a very short list, is just some names. And I feel like you can pick up what I'm getting at. Gino Iainucci, Guy Mariano, Alexis Sablon, Bamajera, Louis Barletta, Jim Greco, Mike Appadalli, oh, sorry, they're wrong, Steve Barra, Jeff Grasso, et cetera. There are an absurd amount of Italian-American skateboarders in skateboarding. This is a perfect opportunity for all of us to come together and share that heritage, because for some people, I'm sure they don't know that there actually is that level of Italian-American involvement in skateboarding. In any way that we want to collaborate here, I think that we should not look at this as an opportunity for combativeness or an opportunity to seek a winner. This should be a moment where we can see where can we find middle ground? How can we move forward? Unfortunately, the city of Pittsburgh actually has zero city-maintained skateparks within the city, which is wild. Most small cities do have city-maintained skateparks, in most cases, incredibly well-built skateparks. And I know most of you might think, oh, Polish Hill, Polish Hill Bowl. Nope. It's actually been taken over by locals because it was unmaintained. Any concrete features you see there were built by locals. The level of craftsmanship we do have for our DIY skateparks here is incredibly impressive. We have people who work on skateparks professionally, who are willing to give their time to build these parks, to make a truly safe skate environment. But again, this only shouldn't be a space for skateboarding. This is a space for all cultures to meet together. The park down in Panther Hollow was entirely unused. This could be a great opportunity for some sort of cultural festival, some music festivals of some sort, just something where we can actually all propel each other forward rather than tear each other down. And I look forward to all that can come from this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jose Ochoa.
What did I get myself into? My name is Jose Ochoa. My neighborhood is Knoxville and Hazelwood previously. I come here as a, I worked with youth for five years, youth in pressure middle school and high school. And I'm also a father, nine months ago. I want to, I can of course talk about the skatepark because it's very, feels very personal to me. Not that I have any ownership of the space, but the access or how, just to express the way skateboarding has impacted my life in many positive ways. When I was 14 years old, I lost my father in a very tragic way. And at the moment, felt like, I didn't realize it then, but skateboarding impact like gave me that community. You'll hear this throughout, like I'm not going to be the only one saying, speaking about community and the guidance that skateboarding has given to their lives. But in the environment that I grew up, grew up, I could have ended up like doing dumb things on the street. But it gave me a sense of purpose, like some sort of discipline, family. And you'll keep hearing that from people probably. And I'm too nervous. But I know that people are concerned about the heritage of the neighborhood and I respect the heritage. I think it's important and because history does matter here. But I don't think we're trying to come into Panther Hollow and try to erase the history. It feels like we're trying to add to it. There's young people taking initiative, building something out of a space that wasn't used, and making their mark in their community. And that's how history is made. And that's what makes neighborhood live and breathe instead of becoming frozen in time. And that's it.
Thank you. We're now going to take our two proclamations that are to be presented. Councilwoman Smith?
This is my very unique proclamation for the Lebanese Food Festival. I'm Lebanese, born and raised in Oakland. But I will say that, this is my last proclamation, but I wanted to make sure we did it to let people know about all the great things that the Lebanese community that we do in the city of Pittsburgh and beyond. We have a huge population. I think people don't realize I have 2,000 family members just in this region alone, but there's 3 million, approximately 3 million Americans of Lebanese descent. So I'll read a little bit about this and we'll talk a little bit more. Whereas approximately 3 million Americans of Lebanese descent live in the United States today, representing five generations whose migration began in the 19th century. The first major wave of Lebanese immigrants to the Pittsburgh area arrived between 1870 and 1924, with most coming from what was then known as the Syrian Province. And whereas, Our Lady of Victory Maronite Church was founded in 1902 and has served the Lebanese-American community of Pittsburgh and Western Pennsylvania for over a century. It is one of the only three Maronite churches in the region, and only one, the only one located in Allegheny County. And whereas, located at 1,000 Tropical Avenue, they moved into the city of Pittsburgh from outside the suburbs, Our Lady of Victory Church, it will be hosting its annual Pittsburgh Lebanese Festival from Friday, September 5th through Sunday, September 7th. And whereas, the festival promises to be a joyful celebration, whose family and friends come together to enjoy delicious food, lively music, and traditional dancing. And I will mention, we have hookahs. With the support of over 100 dedicated volunteers, the flavors of Lebanon are brought to Pittsburgh, fostering a warm and welcoming sense of community for everyone who attends. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Our Lady of Victory Maronite Church for their service to the community and their faithfulness to their heritage. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare September 5th through the 7th, 2025 to be Lebanese-American Days in the city of Pittsburgh.
Do you have a motion to approve?
To move.
Second.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. He said we're all the same, not quite. Not quite. When I walk, when I, my brother, who's a Maronite Catholic Corbis walks in the church, they want to kiss his ring. When I walk in, they want to kick something else.
Good luck for your project about the skatepark. I pray for you. For the last year, we got, we had more than 20,000 visitors through three days in our festival. And hope this year we can reach around 25,000 or 30,000 visitors. And I hope you will be between the 25,000 or 30,000 visitors. You will feel home. Everybody are welcome to join us and you will be well, well taken care of. And this is our Lebanese way, and not only our Lebanese way, but also our Lebanese-American way. God bless you all and God protect you all. Thank you.
My name's Nick Roma. I'm a parishioner of the church and I respect the commitment, loyalty, and effort that you folks are putting forth to go forward with your project. Just a little bit about history, if I may, and loyalty. Our church was founded in 1902, and I'll make this really brief. When the Second World War broke out, everybody went, we had over 50 people go into the Second World War commitment. Our priest said, if everybody comes back, he would build another church. Miraculously, every single person came back alive, which is unbelievable. He built, he committed to building another church. Since then, we've had all these commitments, Korea, Vietnam, the Middle East, and on and on up until today. We have had members serving our military, not lost, won, not one single one. It's called Our Lady of Victory for a reason. So I understand your commitment because that's what we're about. If you want to come to a place that is committed to its people, its food, its culture, we would welcome you to come this weekend. Thank you very much.
Maybe the women could stay up here. The women want to come up here? The next one? Deb, Councilwoman Gross, I'm sorry. Come on. I'm gonna tell you, would the riveters please join us? Come forward, everyone. I just want to say, when I first got here, my door said Councilman. And one of the first things I did was ask them to take off Councilman and put on Councilwoman, because I was proud to be a woman elected to this position and to do the things that, you know, we can do in the community. And then, I noticed that there was a lot of favor around the men, even after that. So I formed the Women's Caucus for City Council. And I think that the women have a different role, but we have absolutely amazing supportive men on council, so it's never really a battle. But it was at some point. So I appreciate anytime somebody's forming women groups. And I'm really thrilled that you formed this in District 2. So I'm going to give a little shout out here to you. Whereas, the Pittsburgh Riveter Soccer Club was established in 2024 by the Pittsburgh Riverhounds to serve as the women's first team counterpart to their men's team in the USL Championship, with a vision to grow into a fully professional team in the future. And whereas, the Riveters made their official debut on May 16th during the 2025 USLW League season, hosting their first home game at Highmark Stadium before a sold-out crowd, the fourth highest attendance in the stadium's history, which the stadium is in District 2, I have to say, South Shore in District 2, by Station Square. Whereas, the club finished their inaugural season with an impressive record of six wins, one loss, and three draws, securing the Great Forest Division title and advancing to the Central Conference playoffs. And whereas, the team proudly draws powerful inspiration from Rosie the Riveter, a timeless symbol of strength, resilience, and female empowerment during World War II, and seeks to channel that same spirit to unite and inspire a new generation of athletes and supporters, not to be confused with athletic supporters. And whereas, the club is led by head coach Scott Gibson, who also serves as the academy director for the Riverhounds and coaches the ECLNL girls team, along with the assistant coaches, John Rotz and Mike Proviano.
Proviano.
Proviano. And goalkeeper coach Regan Duval, who also is an assistant coach at Robert Morris University, and brings valuable playing and coaching experience from the USLW League. And whereas, the Riveters players, some as young as 15, I have grandkids older than that, embody the bold, the bold, we can do it spirit, blazing new trails in Pittsburgh's rich sports history, serving as role models and inspiration for young girls and women across the region. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and congratulate the Pittsburgh Riveter Soccer Club for their historic inaugural season and support them as they continue to grow and inspire women on and off the field. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025 to be Pittsburgh Riveters Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
Second. Second.
On favor say aye. Congratulations.
I just always appreciate all of the people who put so much time and effort, especially into starting new things for the city of Pittsburgh. So we really appreciate how much more of a heavy lift this is than if you, you know, there were people here standing before you. So thank you all for all of your efforts and good luck to you. We can't wait to see the games.
I want to thank Councilwoman Kail Smith for honoring you all today and for allowing us to stand with her. We need more women's sports. We need to support women's sports. I think it said it perfectly in the proclamation, you're leaders on and off the field. You're such role models. And so, thank you all for what you do. Thanks for everyone who's been a part of starting this and, you know, can't support you enough. So you have the support of City Council. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Just to echo what Councilwoman Strasburger said, you know, I mean soccer, when it comes to women's sports, soccer is always at the forefront, right? Like so, and I was actually at the Like so, and I was, I was actually at the Riverhounds game when you announced that the Riveters were coming, and it was just the, the energy was, was so great and so wonderful. And thank you for trailblazing to include more, more women and girls in sports. And, you know, we have a lot of athletes here in the room, and most of, most of them, right, are, are men, right? We can see that. So it's something that we need, and, and I know that it's something that all of us, right, as, as, as a community and as a city want to see more of. So thank you, thank you.
As the head coach of the Pittsburgh Rivers, it's been an honor, and it's a responsibility that I take very seriously. A year ago, when we started to put the team together from scratch, we had no players, it was just a vision. And that vision was shared by the owner, Tuffish Hellenberger, our president, Jeff Garner, who's here, sporting director, Dan Visser, and the rest of the staff, and obviously great coaching staff that are to my left. In addition to that, is the, is all the support staff, marketing teams, sales, everyone that puts a lot of work in behind the scenes to certainly make this possible. So without them, none of this would be, would be certainly possible. As we go to the, the supporters and the fans in the city of Pittsburgh, to have over twenty-eight thousand people come to watch these fantastic players and young women play, sort of brought a tear to our eye in, in the first game, in front of six thousand people as, as those girls ran out with, with the city behind them. So that was amazing too. And to the players, as we built this team, we wanted to have a good mix of players from the city of Pittsburgh, but also from around the world. And I think we did that and got that mixed, mixed quite well. You know, I think at the end, after we won the division, I'm getting messages from players who are from Germany, Spain, all across the world, saying forever four-one-two, summer, Pittsburgh's always in my heart. I think making the city of Pittsburgh a destination is something also that is very important to us. So thank you everyone for the support, we look forward to year two, and as our owner always says, we're, we're just getting started. So thank you.
Okay. See, let me just tell you women, I never let men speak for me, okay? Coach or no coach, I'm just kidding. Anyway, does everyone want to come forward for the photo? Oh, here. This is inside, this is inside. No, that's okay. That's the way that's done. Thank you, Council President, for allowing me to interrupt the public comment. I apologize for interrupting your public comment too. But I will say it might have been divine intervention since Father's gonna pray for you all now.
And with that, we will now return to public comment, and our next registered speaker is Zane Gribshaw. Our next speaker is Eric Vanden Hengel. Hope I pronounced that somewhat correctly.
Hello, my name is Eric, I'm from Brookline. I've been skating my whole life, I'm forty-three years old, I have advanced degrees. I just wanted to say, you know, it's not just kids using the space, it's also older, older people like myself. It's one hundred percent an inclusive activity. It doesn't recognize gender, it doesn't recognize race, it doesn't recognize ethnicity, I am half Italian. But where one is exclusive, this is all one hundred percent inclusive of an activity. And I think that needs to be stated, we collaborate, we work together, we fun together. I mean, this is something, this was a space that was vacant, that now has a vitality and a life to it, that I think would be a shame to stifle. And just wanted to say, AJ, thank you very much for all your hard work and leadership. Raul before you, and it's a special place, and I hope you guys see that.
Hi all, and thank you for including me in today's meeting. As a resident at Greenfield, I'd like to continue my advocacy and support of Oakland DIY. Today, I'll share some of what the skateboarding community can do within itself for the individual. And, and I ask each person in this room to imagine what advocacy for a positive outlet such as the skate park can do for ours. So growing up, I was a young man who was constantly seeking an outlet, swimming, baseball, soccer, video games, and ultimately Ashken Sports. We were always seeking these moments. So I can recall parks such a, sorry, I can recall the parks where the big kids would skate, such as Mr. Smalls, B Cubed, and even both locations of PA Cheapskates. This may age me, but these spots are what set the base for what skating community can be. And it is there that, sorry. Yeah, sorry, it is there that it is what molded me under the wing of generosity and like-mindedness of kind individuals. When I wasn't on the fields or in the pool, I was dragging homemade ramps onto local baseball courts and, or sorry, basketball courts, and filming my good friends skating and capturing antics of being a young man. Skateboarding will remain a tender place in my heart for those and those who are willing to put the effort and reach out for those seeking a positive outlet. I discovered Oakland DIY in the summer of two thousand and twenty-four, and from a social media post of a crude ramp simply titled "Help." That simple post sparked a call to action for me to become one of those big kids who, who's there to help. I was quickly humbled by the work being done at the DIY, remembering the basics of STEM, turning a wrench, and drilling a guiding hole into wood. This was another type of build. There was, this is what we were doing, we were planning to frame the form of a rough shape into the mini, into where the mini pipes dance today. And so, to be honest, this is one of the biggest projects I've worked on, and it brought to, brought to, poof, brought to me a full heart, and it continues to make me smile today when I see people use this park. So yeah, I just want to continue my advocacy, these are simply notes and stories that I've experienced and from navigating the community and witnessing what the DIY has to offer. I see a space for skaters and their family alike to socialize as well as put into action a showcase of their skills, whether that be into the sport or building of these features, and community, of course. Allow these young men to create the park of their dreams and support those seeking a positive outlet. Sorry, me in the tears.
Our, our next speaker is Kristy McConnell.
Hi. My name is Kristy McConnell, I'm actually from Trafford in Westmoreland County, but my husband and I travel to different skate parks with my four-year-old son and my thirteen-year-old niece. And we have so much fun every week finding different skate parks to go and skate at and learn. We, we see that there's a lot of hiking and biking trails and baseball diamonds and basketball courts and playgrounds throughout the city, but very few skate parks. We usually travel outside of the city. But there is the Oakland DIY, which we were at one time, but we had the best time, and all the ramps were super fun, and we all learned a new trick that day. You know, AJ and the skate community in Pittsburgh, who helped him, have done a great job designing, fundraising, and building these structures. They turned what was a dilapidated and non-use space into a wonderful space to play, exercise, and bond. We just recently got back into skating, my husband and I, because we were skaters back in the nineties where there was no place to skate. We skated on the street, we skated on the sidewalks, we skated in parking lots where we were often yelled at and chased off by security and police. And it's just great to see that there are more opportunities for skaters these days. My husband also lost thirty pounds since we started skating again, so I just want to comment that it's, it is exercise, and it's not just, I don't know, it's fun too, though. I feel like this park is a true reflection of Pittsburgh acceptance and inclusion to all regardless of age, race, religion, and sexual orientation, all are welcome, from kids to adults, families, skateboarders and roller skaters, et cetera, all kinds utilize these parks. We've never run into any kind of bad energy at these parks. Everybody is always kind, helpful, and they just want to see you do well, they'll do anything they, they can to help. I'm not sure exactly what the opposition's grievances are, I think maybe noise or something, but I'm guessing that these gentlemen just don't understand what skateboarding is, and it gets a bad rap sometimes, and that's okay. Skateboarding has just recently started gaining traction in the mainstream. But there are a couple of things that I am sure they understand, and that is family and community. And skate, skaters are most definitely a family and a community. I just wonder how anyone could think that adding a park to a community is a bad idea. It would be a shame to shut down Oakland DIY Skate Park. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the Pittsburgh City Council. My name is Joseph Conklin. I'm here as both a skateboarder and a Duquesne alumni, and a member of the Pittsburgh community to speak in support of the Oakland DIY Skate Park. Over the past five years, the Oakland DIY has grown into more than just some skate spot with ramps and rails, it's become a community space that brings people together from all ages, including skaters, artists, musicians, and neighbors. This space has trans, this space has transformed, which was once an unused neglected area, into something positive and alive. For young skaters especially, the skate park has provided a safe and healthy outlet. All too often, people will say that kids these days just are on their phones and need to go outside. But when you give them a place like the Oakland DIY, they get outside, they exercise, they connect with others, building community and confidence. I've seen this firsthand, beginners of all ages being cheered on by experienced skaters and people from all different backgrounds connecting because of a shared love of skateboarding. And let's be clear, skateboarding is not just some kids messing around, it's a sport, and now an Olympic sport at that. In Allegheny County, there are countless numbers of playgrounds with monkey bars and swings, but only a handful of skate parks. Skateboarding offers the same physical benefits as traditional sports, if not more, and it teaches perseverance, creativity, and resilience. You'd think our city would want more practicing facilities for our youth to grow, which is now a global sport, not viewer. The Oakland DIY also strengthens Pittsburgh culture that works, they work that, excuse me, the work that volunteers have put into that park is entirely community-driven. People brought their own tools, cement, and time, and built something for our community. That kind of grassroots effort should be valued and not erased. I understand that there may be some concerns for safety and maintenance, but shutting down the Oakland is not the answer, Oakland DIY is not the answer. The liability concerns for the skateboarders suing property owners has been greatly exaggerated for decades. Our community takes responsibility for ourselves, and we want to work with the city, not against it. Skaters are willing to maintain, clean, and improve the space, we want to partner with the city, not oppose it. The Oakland DIY has already proven it can take the empty forgotten space and turn it into something vibrant. Imagine what we could do with support with the city. This is not about skateboarding, it's about preserving a community hub that has been brought joy, growth, and opportunity to hundreds of people, not only in Pittsburgh, but all over. This benefits, the park provides the community clearly outweighs the concerns. Please do not take this away and help the Oakland DIY become a safe, positive, and lasting space for the community.
Our next speaker is Luke Soltzer. Our next speaker is Adam Spear.
Good morning, I'm Adam Spear from Shadyside. I'm here today in strong support of the Oakland DIY Skate Park. This community-built park, self-funded by local skaters, provides safe recreation for Pittsburgh families. I want to address the claims raised against the park because they're legally and factually baseless. The opposition's not local, not grounded in law, and not supported by fact. The loudest voice comes from someone who, by his own admit, by his own admission, is a resident of Waikiki, living five thousand miles away in Hawaii. Heritage and memory matter, but Pittsburgh's recreational policy must serve the people who actually live here, raise their families here, and contribute to the community, not distant critics operating on nostalgia. First, liability. Pennsylvania law provides multiple overlapping protections. The assumption of risk doctrine means participants accept inherent recreational risks. The political subdivision torts Claim Act provides broad municipal immunity, and even if someone could pierce that protection, damages are capped at five hundred thousand, not the millions claimed. The Recreational Use of Land and Water Act shields landowners, including cities, from negligent suits based, negligent suits on recreational property. These three layers of protection create nearly impenetrable immunity, eliminating the exaggerated liability arguments being used to frighten this council. Process. The record shows the opposite of secrecy, multiple public meetings, multiple chances for comment. This is transparency in action. Noise. According to nine-one-one records, zero documented complaints in the last year about the skate park. Zero. The park has no artificial lighting, so activity ends at sundown, and this is an area where an active train line runs. The noise issue is theoretical, not real. Civil rights. Public recreational facilities like this actually advance civil rights by ensuring equal access to quality amenities regardless of status, ethnic background, or race. To call this a civil rights dispute trivializes the real struggles of those who fought and continue to fight for equality under the law. Pittsburgh residents of all ages use this facility every day. People walk here after school and work, parents bring their childrens on weekends. People of all ages, of all ages find community and purpose through skateboarding. Unlike organized sports with costly equipment and fees, this park democratizes recreation and keeps it accessible to people of every background and age. This park is safe, legal, and beloved, as evidenced by the overwhelming support that we have today. I urge you to see through the manu, the, to see through the opposition's manufactured concerns and continue supporting this valuable community asset for the people who live here, raise their families here, and whom you were elected to serve.
Our next speaker is Joseph Packey.
Hello, my name is Joseph Pacey, and I'm my senior year at the University of Pittsburgh studying computer science, and I'm here to speak in favor of the Oakland DIY. About three years ago, as I was finishing my freshman year, I learned that there was a skate park nestled in Panther Hollow, so I decided I would finally try to learn how to skate, but I had no idea how much of an impact it would have on my life. At the time, the DIY was much smaller than it is now, and the more time that I spent there, the more involved I got. It wasn't until the first time that I helped to build a feature when I realized just how much of an impact I can personally have on my community. Spending all day mixing and pouring concrete in the hot sun might not have been my first choice for fun Saturday activities. choice for fun Saturday activities. It quickly became one of my favorite college memories. Seeing months of planning and hard work finally realized into a physical feature is incredibly gratifying, and I'm proud to have dedicated so much of my time to creating a safe space for people to hang out and share our love for skateboarding. Because skateboarding is not...or sorry, skateboarding is easily one of the hardest things I've done, and nobody's just naturally good at it. It takes years of practice and countless fails to even be kind of all right, but that's what makes it so rewarding. In a world where you can access pretty much anything through your phone, skateboarding is a place where making progress is only possible by confronting and overcoming failure, by stepping outside your comfort zone and taking risks. It's the physical embodiment of picking yourself up after you fall and then trying again. And that's why there's so much respect within the skating community. No matter who you are, what your background is, or what skill level you are, we're all there to skate, and everyone in that park understands what it means to put yourself out there and fail. We faced our fears of dropping in for the first time, spent hours and hours trying to learn a new trick, and we've learned how to fall while doing it. But it can be intimidating as a beginner to put yourself out there when people are doing tricks that you can't even name, where you're struggling to even get your board off the ground. After all, nobody wants to mess up in front of their peers. But that's what makes this skate community so special, because it might sound obvious, but no matter how good somebody is now, everybody was a beginner once. So when somebody finally lands a trick that they've been working on, there's cheers and congratulations all around the park regardless of how easy or hard it was, because skateboarding is fundamentally about pushing yourself beyond your boundaries. Through skating, I've learned how to step outside my comfort zone, gain confidence in my successes, and resilience every time I fail, and that is why I truly think that the Oakland DIY is important to the Oakland community. By supporting the park, you're helping to create a space where people can push themselves to be better, find a sense of community, and get some exercise. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Jackson Wright.
Good morning. My name is Jackson Wright, and I am a senior this year at the University of Pittsburgh. I'm studying environmental science. I have lived in Oakland for the past three years and now currently reside on Boundary Street. I cannot speak highly enough of the positive impact the Oakland DIY has made on the Oakland community. I cannot speak for the state of the park prior to 2022, but in my short three years at Pitt, I have watched it grow from a near vacant lot to a little skate park to the thriving community that exists there today. People of all ages, races, and backgrounds find their community at the DIY. It seems no matter what time I'm walking home throughout the day, there are always skaters at the park enjoying the sun, good music, and the company of their fellow skaters. In recent years, too many of our historic Pittsburgh properties and neighborhoods have been bought up by management companies and absentee landlords. Even to those of us who are living in Pittsburgh temporarily, the injustice is obvious. Oakland is no exception. These people and these companies leave properties to rot, inflate rent to unrealistic sums for the average Pittsburgher, or completely bulldoze these historic neighborhoods, buildings, and homes to create housing and development for the more fortunate while displacing the less fortunate. This is the complete opposite of what the DIY is about. While I never experienced it for myself, I understand that the Panther Hollow Playground on Boundary Street was once something great, a place where people found community, a place where children could play and make friends, and then it became a vacant lot. And now, while it may not look the same, the property on Boundary Street that is now the Oakland DIY is once again a thriving hub where parents bring their children, where people find community, and where so many people find their home. It cannot be understated the impact that the DIY has made on both the Oakland neighborhood and on Pittsburgh as a whole. The DIY is a pillar in the community built by both students and Pittsburghers alike regardless...or for all. Regardless of background, regardless of skill, everyone can find community at the DIY. You don't need to be part of a club, you don't have to pay to play, you just need yourself and a set of wheels. Thank you.
Our next speaker is William Michael McDonough.
Hi, my name is William McDonough. I live in Volensby, West Virginia, about an hour away from here, and I travel to the Oakland DIY Skate Park about every weekend, maybe less, but I've been there to help move stuff around a couple times, and from what I've seen, it is a great community, and I've met many friends, plenty. Oakland DIY gave me hope to start a DIY of my own in my own city because of how I have seen it prosper and flower. And everybody's been saying that we've been seeing them get big sponsors from big companies and see big skaters come around to skate, so... Phew, this is a lot, talking in front of people. I've already frozen loss, but honestly, it is the best skate park in Pittsburgh, best flat bar, learned all my tricks there, hey. Best quarter pipes, hey. You built the coping, you're the man, hey. Everybody here, thank you. My name's Billy, though, I'm out.
Our next speaker is Natalia Chorba.
Good morning, my name is Natalia Chorba. I have been living in Garfield for several years now, and I'm here in support of the Oakland DIY. I've been skating there for about three years. The third or fourth time that I ever skated was there, so I think it really hits home for me and feels way more comfortable than most other skate parks in the city. And I want to specify that I'm actually a skater on roller skates, not on a skateboard like so many of my peers here today. And while I don't think that is as significant to y'all, I think that is something significant to everyone here who is a skater. We might not be acknowledged by the Olympics yet as skateboarders are as of 2024, I believe, but I hope that one day we'll be able to join them in that honor. There's a lot of people here who have expressed my feelings better than I can with my shaky voice and anxiety, but I want to emphasize that this is a place that builds community unlike any other skate park in the greater Pittsburgh area. There are probably around 10 other skate parks within 10 miles of Pittsburgh, but as someone who is trans and doesn't always have...I don't always get the best reception from the skateboarding community, but I've never had that problem here at Oakland DIY, and I think that makes a huge difference as well. Also, I know that this isn't a place just for Pittsburgh. I've skated with people from as far away from Florida, and pretty consistently, one of my friends who lives out in Newcastle comes and skates here with me. Other people have also mentioned Polish Hill here, but honestly, I think that park is a shadow of what Oakland is, both because of the fact that it just hasn't seen a lot of upkeep over the years, and also it doesn't have someone like A.J. and the greater community propping it up. Also, one other thing that I think is important is, over the past decades, roller rinks have been closing all over the country at a record rate, and while that might not be directly relevant, they have a very solid...there's been research showing that they help people improve their mental health, and with all of those closing, we need an alternative place to spend time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Nico Newton.
Hi, my name is Nico Newton, and I'm 14 years old. I've been skating for eight years, and skateboarding is a very important part of my life, and so is the Oakland DIY. At Oakland DIY, I found a sense of community, friendship, and belonging. From making new friends to learning new tricks, the skate park community has always inspired me to push myself. Oakland DIY is a safe space often feels like a second home. It is an encouraging environment where skaters of all ages come together to have fun and sharpen their skills. So with that, the Oakland DIY has become a strong community through their pours and skate jams that make everyone feel included, and I don't want to see that go away. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Buchanan.
Thank you for letting me speak. I mostly wanted to speak to the older folks here in the chamber that we haven't really done very well by the kids since I was a kid. Cell phones, COVID, school shootings, everything. We owe them more than what we're giving them, and I think taking away something like Oakland DIY would just be terrible for that. You know, you can't skate and look at your cellphone, you know? You can't skate and drink beer, you know? Like, it's a really, really healthy, active thing for kids who spend way too much time indoors now, just looking at their phones. Yeah, and I just wanted to remind everybody of that, that we need to do better by our kids, and this is one really great way we could do that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bodhi Neel.
Hello, my name is Bodhi Neel, and I'm from Belverne area, and I've grown up in Pittsburgh my whole life. And when I first discovered the Oakland DIY, it was rundown and abandoned, but regardless, that's where I met Raul. He was alone fixing the pavements or the cracks in the pavements by himself, and I introduced myself, and he immediately began to share his ideas of how he could raise money and make this a space for the community once again. And anytime I was in the area after that, I would stop by the DIY to see the progress, and every time, Raul was there working on something. And after meeting a plethora of supportive and hospitable people there, I found myself driving 45 minutes past other skate parks just to be in this environment that no other skate park has achieved. The DIY created a sanctuary for me to grow my love for skateboarding. And after Raul left and put the park in A.J.'s hands, he immediately carried on his legacy and spent so much of his own free time creating new features, cleaning up the park, and raising money. And all this raised money goes towards new concrete and features for the park, and I've never seen a community work together better than when the concrete truck comes and countless people show up just eager to do their part and help out. Now, I attend Point Park University, where the DIY is only a short minute, 10-minute bike ride away. Otherwise, I would have a 25-minute bus ride to the nearest skate park. This is not just a skate park. This is a dynamic community where all types of people have gathered and grown together for the love of the Oakland DIY. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Taryn Frey.
My name is Taryn Frey, and I am from South Fayette. I am here to speak on the influence and positivity of the Oakland DIY Skate Park. I've watched from the background the local skate community grow exponentially in not only size, but in strength, skill, and knowledge for the love on Boundary Street. A.J. Hadden, a senior at the University of Pittsburgh majoring in mechanical engineering, has put hard work, dedication into the park. He is the driving force behind every project since taking on the leadership of growing the facility. Blueprints and planning plotted under his minor in 3D simulation brought to life then took shape each cement pour guided by professional skate park builders. With every consideration to ensure proper safety protocols and build techniques in place, he combined his passion into a community project to bring a safer skate environment. To some, the skaters and the park could be viewed as a bunch of misfits, but a book should not be judged by its cover. The clothes and the hair might have changed, but the love and dedication and diligence echo the same history and foundation that the Panther Hollow neighborhood was built on, the bond of brotherhood, character, and hard work. Oakland DIY is fully keeping alive that heritage by teaching the younger skate athletes the same value, leading by example, as well as the critical skills of building, cement work, and self-worth. They are carrying forward a great Pittsburgh tradition. The ancestors that began Panther Hollow would be proud. While it may be hard for some to see the neighborhood they love change, I would like to reference an excerpt from "The Art of Letting Go" by Mr. Carlino Gampolo. "Letting go of a loved one means moving from a period of relative security into one which demands the redefining of an individual's place and purpose in life. This is a painful yet necessary process. The transition involves coming to terms with two dimensions of challenge. The private reevaluation of self and the mode of interacting with others. In the private realm, the individual reflects upon the nature of personal resources with which to live through the suffering involved with separation. Once a healthy attitude towards a situation has been established, the stage is set for embracing daily experiences with the confidence and strength upon which meaningful life can be built. Oakland DIY is redefining itself, is inviting the interacting of the generations to build and grow." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, University of Oxford, University of Pittsburgh, downtown, near the Three Rivers Point, and downtown Three Rios, Ciudad de la Plata in the Argentine Republic. Geological Society of America and the American Association of Geographers, I secured memberships in the early 2000s. I'm a candidate for representing the Global Intelligence Society, which I founded, for President of the United States in 2028, and for Mayor Pittsburgh 2025. We have 30 cities so far, and in our net and rising. Council concerns local government. You all should come back and do this again. We really need you. And ally twin cities. This is consistent with my Initiative 3 for local no-party government and Initiative 6 for connections with the other cities to make allies. A Three Rivers convergence locality that I think should be an ally city of Pittsburgh, which is a city of three rivers, the Mon, the Allegheny, and Ohio, it's a water city, is La Plata. Be like water, Bruce Lee said. That's what these skateboarders do. My logo, now, shentei, takes a little bit different tack, but be in motion. Let the river run, Carly Simon sang. A river of immigrants. I am anti-force, no-hearing, delegitimizing immigration out of the United States and Pittsburgh City. I am pro free-chosen legitimate immigration into the US country and Pittsburgh City. Many were the hands that built America. You two, from Scorsese's, great gangs of New York, and many will be the hands that we will use and invite to rebuild the United States and Pittsburgh. Let the river run, come to America, and we want all of you to stay in America and in Pittsburgh. A Three Rivers city ally should be La Plata. La Plata, Argentina, which is the confluence of the Piranha, Uruguay, and Rio de la Plata. La Plata population in 1960 was 300,000, Pittsburgh, 600,000. La Plata now is 600,000 in Pittsburgh, 300,000. They're doing something right, and we can learn from La Plata. Universidad Nacional de la Plata has 60,000 students, Pitt has 30,000. That's one-tenth of the population of this city. Let the river run, come to Pittsburgh, stay in Pittsburgh, and immigrate into this city and be like Dr. Juan Maldacena. Let the river run, come to Pittsburgh, stay in Pittsburgh, and immigrate into this city and be like Dr. Juan Maldacena.
The next speaker is Brianna Jimenez.
Good morning. My name is Brianna. Thank you all for allowing me to speak this morning in support of Oakland DIY Skate Park. Much has been said about this space, but I want to remind everybody here something clear. The community behind the Oakland DIY Skate Park is not trying to erase the history or disrespect the Italian heritage of Panther Hollow. We are doing what generations before them have done in this very city, carving out a safe place to belong. The kids, teens, and adults who skate there are not criminals. We are simply trying to foster a safe space to belong, build community, and practice our hobbies that bring us so much joy in life. Is it a crime to search for joy and try to build community around it? Skating is a lifeline for mental health for so many people, including myself, and is a safer alternative to risk your paths that we probably all have seen family members, loved ones, or friends go down. It would be a huge detriment to the community to lose Oakland DIY Skate Park as it's truly a special place. We can and we must choose coexistence. Honoring Panther Hollow's Italian roots does not require the destruction of a growing community space and our turning our backs on our youth. Imagine instead something reasonable like a plaque or a memorial at the skate park that might incorporate and tell the story of the families who built the neighborhood, an act that can connect the past to the present, rather than tearing them apart. This is not the Mont Oakland roadway forced upon the neighborhood from the top down. This is something very different. The skate park is the opposite and it is a grassroots, community-driven, community-funded, and a deeply loved project. It reflects the very values of dignity, resilience, and creativity that the neighborhood of Panther Hollow was built upon. And we need to support the growth of Oakland DIY Skate Park. Council members, thank you for your time this morning, and I urge you, please do not allow the skate park to be erased. Instead, let it stand as a living example of how Pittsburgh honors both tradition and tomorrow. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Anthony Jackson. Our next speaker is Joseph Klammer.
Hello, good morning. My name is Joseph Klammer. I am 31 years old. I grew up in Bloomfield and currently reside in Troy Hill. I am here in support of Oakland DIY. In May of this year, I wrote an article for the Pittsburgh City Paper covering the positive culture fostered in Pittsburgh skate scene. And the issues cover photo was taken at our beloved Oakland DIY. In the article, I mentioned how hopeful it is to see the city being more involved in supporting grassroots movements within our skate community. That article received positive attention locally and nationwide, often through comments and direct messages to myself and those involved in the interviews via our social media posts. Many of these messages shared our excitement about the support from the city and the park staff and for how the park would grow in the future. But before this, Oakland DIY was already a space known nationally. Everyday skaters and professional teams alike visit the park from out of state to see what this crew built. If you take a look at the Google reviews for Oakland DIY, you'll find over 35-star reviews from the, over the years stating the welcome, welcoming locals and quality construction of the park. So without a doubt, this space has now become a Pittsburgh destination, a place loved by those who live here and admired by those who want to visit. Before this skate park began, this was a severely neglected and underutilized space. No one else seemed to care for the space except for this crew, who took it upon themselves to create something beautiful. Beyond the skate park itself, with the help of the city, the water fountain was restored, a porta potty installed, new picnic benches put in place. Now anyone passing by can make better use of the space via joggers, bikers, skaters, or local residents. The crew behind the skate park plans to make further improvements in coordination with the city, some of which acknowledge the great Italian-American heritage of the area. AJ and the crew at Oakland DIY care deeply about the respect of not only the space, but of those who visit and those who reside nearby. They will always make sure visitors clean up any trash, remove and ward against offensive graffiti, and generally take the place as welcome, make the place as welcoming and hospitable as possible. To tear this achievement away from them, from us skaters, would be a serious disservice. It would be telling the six-year-old girl who's learning to drop in, the 40- to 50-year-old father that stops by before going to work, and the many that spend their money, time, and hands to help build each and every obstacle, that their community is not supported by our city. In closing, instead of arguing over who or what belongs here, I propose all parties work together in continuing to revitalize this important space for everybody. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris Mori.
Hi, my name is Chris Mori. I live in Squirrel Hill, District Eight, and I'm also the Executive Director of InformUp.org, a local nonprofit that reports weekly on city council and pairs that reporting with surveys so that we can share our readers' preferences directly to council members. And I have our survey responses covering last week's issues that council covered. So with respect to the tiny home communities, 30 of 53 respondents strongly agreed or agreed with the statement, "I support the development of tiny home communities for those needing temporary shelter in my neighborhood", with 21 of 53 either disagreeing or strongly disagreeing. One comment kind of symbolizing the, the feedback and support, "No one should be on the street. It is inhumane and damaging to public health. Drug, alcohol, and mental health issues should be addressed and treated. Tiny homes are a great solution for anyone else truly in need of housing." And commenting, representing opposition views, "I just returned from Oakland, California. The tiny housing community there has failed. It is more than a housing problem. Some of these, the homeless have serious health and mental issues. Do not stick a Band-Aid on it. Dig deeper and really think of resolutions." Regarding the new youth council, 36 of 51 respondents were agreed or strongly agreed for the need to create a new youth council representing 19 to 30-year-olds, with nine disagreeing in support, representing the consensus. "I support the youth council membership to give a voice to young people, especially in current times. The modern workplace in Pittsburgh is changing rapidly and we need young people's perspective on these issues as they're being impacted rushing," sorry. And regarding the use of funds for smart trash cans, 31 of 53 respondents agreed or strongly agreed that the city should use, should increase spending on waste management, even if it requires taking funds away from other areas in an effort to, in order to improve the cleanliness of the city, with 20 either being neutral or somewhat disagreeing. Their comments and, and support, but for this, oh, let's see, "The city is disgusting. We need to spend more money to keep up with the trash." Then I guess we should do that. In opposition, "I think spending all that money on smart trash cans is insane. How about some smart trash can collection businesses?" This needs to be reconsidered. So the full survey responses, including all of the comments and additional questions for the council, will be emailed to council members and submitted as testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bernadette Mozy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I did not expect to talk about Panther Hollow. I'm going to talk about a garden. But I will mention something about Panther Hollow. My stepdad worked his whole life at Forbes Field, was a constable of Oakland, and then went on to Three Rivers Stadium before he retired. His mom and the chief's mom were first cousins. So I grew up with the Rooney family as my bonus family. And I remember the stories of how the chief and my dad and everybody out in Forbes Field, they put the students, they put the kids first. They would let these kids in for free because they knew the importance of these kids having a safe place to go and et cetera and et cetera. And me, this big old lady in a wheelchair, I have been riding around on wheels since I was 10 years old and I went to the Crafton Roller Rink, now gone. Then we moved to Mount Lebanon and it was the Bridgeville Roller Rink, now gone. There is something very freeing about being on wheels and with that wind blowing in your hair. You're off the streets, you're out of trouble, you're challenging, challenging yourself constantly. That part needs, needs to be put, you guys need to let them have it. And this bull crap of permits and the fear mongling and everything else, that, close down your permit department and rebuild it because we can't even get the Beachview Sports Association up and going because of the permits and the insurance requirement and everything else. Something is wrong when our kids are repeatedly stopped and brickwalled of having safe places to stay off the streets. I'm so happy for the Italian community, but you can have a little nook and have a little museum and call it a day. Let these kids, big and small, have their skate park. Beachview wanted a skate park. Phyllis DeTiano tried to get that to go through and she was, she was brickwalled on that one. Come on, these kids have a healthy, it's, there is something so free about being on wheels and skating and it's, come on, please. Anyway, parks, real quick. The parklet across from the senior center, it's now always crabgrass. When I was at Highland Park, I sat there and I pulled up on my phone and I taught the kids all about milkweed and all the natural plants they had around the water fountain when everybody else was doing the line dancing. And we need that up there. I can't get to the garden by Beachwood School. I've tried in my wheelchair. I can't. I can't go and enjoy the orchard next to Anthony's place. Can't get there. That's not good for the seniors. But there's a way that you could have one of those natural.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ikana Hal Machina.
Greetings. My title is Chief Ikana Hal Machina. I'm the Grand Inca of the Airqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. It shouldn't come as no surprise to members of city councils that when it comes to alliances, we, the people of the Airqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, do not pledge to any foreign government to include the for-profit corporation known as the City of Pittsburgh and any of its subsidiaries or agencies. This would also include the for-profit corporation known as the United States founded on corruption, thievery, murder, and other nefarious acts of genocide. I am here to put city council members on notice yet again. The oath we each pull to support, protect, and defend the Constitution is as relevant today as it was when it was written in 1787. You are not exempt from any lawful punitive or monetary damages as a result of your disobedience. Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3 of the Constitution mandate that you exclude us from apolitric, oh, excuse me, I mean politics that you are governed by. You govern your citizens. Voluntarily participate. In case you weren't sure where I stand in such politics, let me be clear. I do not, under any circumstances, wish to participate in your government affairs. I do not take offense to being governed, nor do I weigh any of my rights. Any further attempts to assimilate me or the members of my nation will be considered deprivation of our rights, punishable under 18 U.S.D. 241 and 242, as last week Jessica reminded you of. I urge the members of city council to take meaningful steps to address the concerns of our notion, the indigenous people, Aboriginal American people of America. Never forget your standing on stolen land. It is time to make this right. The most fundamental question facing this country, what does it profit a nation to conquer the whole world and lose its soul? Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emily Spurk.
Good morning. My name is Emily Spurk and I'm a resident of Bloomfield. I am a roller skater myself and have been for seven years and I'm also an instructor and coach. I used to be an early childhood educator for five years in the community and I'm also a current mental health therapist that works within the community. I'm here to highlight that Oakland DIY Skate Park is an integral part of this community because it serves for connection, growth, and healing. People have spoke about the community a lot and the community efforts and how they've come together. But truly, this is a park that can host people of all ages, children of all ages. And it's accessed by so many people, people that come out of town, people who are local. People learn how to have discipline. They learn resilience. They learn how to fall and fail. And they also learn teamwork. It also has skating, exercise, movement is medicine, and it has like profound impacts like on our mental health. In an epidemic of loneliness, depression, anxiety, I work with a lot of minoritized identities in my role, LGBTQ community, people who have suffered from sexual assault. When trauma is stored in your body, you need movement to get it out, which is why it's so important to have spaces like this because you can be together in community. You can support each other. You can learn how to take up space. You can grow your strength. You can grow your resilience. It has profound impacts on me and it has had profound impacts on some of my students that I've taught. I've taught young girls at eight years old, all the way up until now, they're 13. And they've won like advanced roller skating competitions, which is like so cool. They like literally went up against adults and that's because they had the opportunity to learn and practice in being a space that is honestly mostly full of men. So it's pretty cool. In terms of like teaching, I have been a paid instructor, but I also volunteer my time because it just means so much to me. And having free spaces that have like this opportunity for others is so important because when you have to pay to play, there's less people who come to play and come to be together. So I hope that you will, you know, consider the skate park a vital part of this community because it's honestly so important for everybody and really supports like the mental health of everyone that uses it. So thank you so much for your time.
Our next speaker is Joseph Pomoroy. Pomeroy? Not. Our next speaker is Mohammed Khalid.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, folks of the council and everyone that has made their time to be here to discuss something that is very close to my heart, the DIY Skate Park. My name is Mohammed Khalid. I'm a local physician and a skateboarder here. And I moved here in 2021, early 2021, for my medical training. And the support that I found at the skate park was unreal. As you all may remember, during that time, there was a lot of uncertainty around COVID and there were a lot of restrictions, a lot of fear, and a lot of changes. The DIY Skate Park really provided a space to allow me to be myself and to just let out a lot of the frustrations that I was feeling at the hospital. And not just for me, but also for a lot of my co-residents that I brought to the skate park and really just got to play and have fun. I honestly do not know if I would have made it through residency as I did if it wasn't for the community that I found at the skate park. Having moved from a different state, there was not many folks that I knew here. It was really incredible to see the community, the support, and just the overall love and passion that we had for skateboarding and for supporting each other. I have had to move around several other states growing up and through my training, but I have never seen anything like the Oakland DIY Skate Park, either in its scale, its craft, or the or the community. It's a very cherished place for me, and the community really does mean a whole lot to me, and I think that's been echoed in all the folks that have spoken on this issue before me. I urge you to celebrate the space, to preserve the space, and help us build it into something even greater that will allow us to be ourselves, have fun, and be as healthy as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Our, thank you. Our next speaker is Alexander Binion. Is Alexander Binion here? Okay. If not, our next registered speaker is Chief Koda Ki Bay.
Greetings, greetings. I am Koda Ki Bay, co-chief of the Airqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And I want to speak a little bit to city council to invite or re-invite our conversations to talk about past painful histories, but more importantly, to move forward onto a brighter future by addressing many concerns that not only the City of Pittsburgh, but the rest of this nation must address, and that's the juridical personality of Aboriginal indigenous peoples and our rejection, our right to reject all forms of assimilation that have been plaguing us since colonization of our lands began. And according to 18 USC 1091, we have a right to be protected from genocide, which deals with genocide. Genocide comes in many forms. It doesn't necessarily mean the killing of anybody, but the removal of one's heritage, culture, and identity. So I urge city council to do what's right, as you guys took an oath to support the Constitution for the United States of America, which includes the several treaties. And there's these treaties that are the cornerstone of the supreme law of man, which all of you are bound to. So again, I would urge very, very vigorously to let's reopen those conversations, to talk about these things, and let's move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cole Miller.
Hey, everyone. Cole Miller, born in New Alexandria, but I moved to Bloomfield, Little Italy. So, you know, this morning I wrote a speech, kind of quickly, it was kind of like a revision of some stuff I've been working on all week, but it's kind of cringy because like everyone else has already said it 10 times over better than I could, so. I guess one thing I do want to say that hasn't been said was, you know, when Raul was still working on this project, something I haven't spoken publicly about was I was going through, like I was diagnosed with cancer, and I was going through some pretty dark times, and it was really hard for me to, you know, kind of just be alone with myself. But I swear to God, the only thing that made me feel better was just when Raul said I could come help build the park, you know, and I had only known him for maybe like a week or two before that. To him, I was just some random person, you know? I think if a space is willing to harbor individuals who are willing to kind of just bring anybody in like that and, you know, spread that positivity, then like, I don't know where else you're going to find it, you know? I mean, it truly is a place where like, social barriers like gender and race don't really exist. I mean, like I implore anybody to walk down on a random day and just like, take a look, you know? It's truly like the place to be, and to take it down would be just criminal, to put it plainly. So, yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Harold Gavin Davidson.
So I'm Gavin Davidson. I am a Oakland resident and I'm in my fourth year of bioengineering school for the University of Pittsburgh. I myself am not a skater. I watch from afar as people enjoy this park, and I watch as AJ puts his time and effort into this, and I've seen it grow from a park that no one would walk down to, to one where I see people walking in front of my house carrying skateboards or friends just to come down and visit. But the Oakland DIY has inserted itself into the Oakland community and surrounding area of Pittsburgh. They became partners with larger companies such as Sacrete when they placed second in the national DIY competition for parks looking for funding. Additionally, they have also worked with local vendors, providing a location to sell clothes, skateboards, and food during their own park events. And a new partnership that they're trying to currently work on is with Haven to incorporate musicians who are starting to find a new career. They've embedded themselves with larger organizations and smaller ones supporting the community, not just their own park. Outside of their partnerships with local businesses, the DIY is also providing a safe area for the community. And as I said, I am not a skater, but I do enjoy going to all of these events. They host things such as a back-to-school jam for young kids and family members, a Halloween jam that's fun where people come out in costume and try to show off their best competitions, as well as LGBTQ jams where all are welcome. Additionally, I've seen AJ work hard at our apartment to set up skating events and skate competitions where people can show off what they've learned. And all these events, people are encouraged from the other riders, whether it's a concrete pour or a skate event. Young kids and adults are learning concrete skills, woodworking skills, that they might not find outside of this park, and AJ and the DIY has created a space for people to learn and enjoy the community together. All, overall, the DIY has turned the surrounding area of Boundary Street into a fun community spot that families, college students, and community members can all enjoy, and I hope that you guys can see that and help it build itself into a better park than what it is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, our next speaker is Helena Pomeroi. Is Helena Pomeroi here?
Can everybody hear me?
Yep, yes, we can. Please, please begin.
Wonderful. Hi, everyone. My name is Helena Pomeroi. I am the wife of Joey Pomeroi, who is a local skateboarder and one of the many contributors at Oakland DIY. We currently reside in Southside Slopes, but frequent the DIY often. Just to give you a brief backstory, so my husband and I were not originally from Pittsburgh. I was born in Youngstown, Ohio, and relocated to Florida in 2001. Joey grew up in Orlando, Florida, which is where we met nearly 10 years ago. Fast forward to June of 2022, I just had concluded a two-year teaching contract with AmeriCorps in Jacksonville. Our lease was up, and since Joey works remotely, our options of where to put roots down felt endless. The goal, though, was to find somewhere completely opposite to what Florida was to us, so somewhere livable, walkable, and uniquely its own. Less cookie cutter subdivisions and sprawl, more variety of cultures. Oh, and an additional perk, it had to have a local skateboarding community. The City of Pittsburgh checked many of the boxes we were looking for, including my husband's need for a solid skate community. It wasn't until we left Oakland DIY that both of our minds, both of them, were officially made up, we would move to Pittsburgh. Since we moved here, other friends and family members have also taken the leap out of Florida and have chosen to call the City of Pittsburgh home. However, although we are transplants, we care about it a great deal, and do our due diligence to educate ourselves and honor its history in whatever way we can. The remnants and the memorial of the Italian community in Panther Hollow could still be seen as an ode to what once was, and it doesn't go unnoticed. I thought it was charming and thoughtful. It made me wonder what happened to the families that were once living on Boundary Street. I know for a fact, and I'm sure you've heard today, that many individuals that utilize the DIY would be more than happy to integrate the skate park with the Italian community by even adding something like hockey courts or other elements that celebrate their culture. Our hope is that the Oakland DIY can continue to grow as both a creative hub for skaters and a welcoming community that reflects the history and culture of the neighborhood. We believe the skate park has the potential to serve as common ground, where past and present meet, honoring the legacy of the Italian community while fostering the energy of a new generation. Joey and I are grateful to call Pittsburgh home, and we're committed to supporting projects that build connections, celebrate diversity, and make the city an even more vibrant place to live. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to register aye votes for the final votes that we'll see on our agenda later.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to our next speaker, who is Trevor Hu. Or Ho. Heard Trevor. If not, that takes us to Race Nicolai Cola? Nicola?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Members of the council, friends, fellow Pennsylvanians, I'd like to begin by thanking you all for the opportunity to make my comments today regarding the public park on Boundary Street in the Panther Hollow DIY. It has come to my attention that some members of the community have called for the removal of this skate park that has taken root there. My name is Race Nicola, and I proudly stand opposed to the demolition of this skate park. I'm originally from Erie, PA, but I was lucky enough to be a student and guest in the beautiful city of Pittsburgh. I still remember the early months of 2021, not really fitting in with any one group, when a classmate asked me if I wanted to help him build a skate park. I thought Raul was crazy, but when we screwed together a PVC pipe and a pair of two-by-six boards in that dusty, unused field hockey court, I caught a glimpse of his vision. Over that year, plywood and pallets became bricks and mortar. The park grew, and with it, more and more folks joined, all eager to lend their unique talents, ideas, skills, and perspectives. For the first time, I didn't just have friends, I had a community, all of us giving every free minute and dollar to achieve the same goal. I remember being so excited when a city parks official came down with a set of trash cans for us stamped with Pittsburgh Parks on the side. Didn't exactly make us official, but we were acknowledged positively by the City of Pittsburgh. I don't think anybody's ever been so excited over trash cans. Concrete was poured, and time went on, and before I knew it, I was graduated and swept across the country to join the workforce. Leaving this community that I had found for myself was one of the hardest things I'd ever done, but every chance I had to return, there was the DIY and all of its patrons welcoming me home with open arms. This park has changed lives and saved lives. My time here is short, so I'll end on this. Many DIYs have risen, and in my travels, I've seen the slab torn to rubble and liborius burnt to ash, but though the ramps no longer stand, the community remains strong, rebuilding and persevering. So even if the worst comes to fruition, and the fate of the Boundary Street Park is bulldozers, everybody who has been at the park, everybody has spoken here today, you've given me a family that no machine can tear down, and for that, I'm forever thankful among the DIY.
Our next speaker, our next speaker is CJ Haas. Or Haas.
Hello, my name is CJ Haas. I lived in Oakland for five years and now live in Bloomfield. I went to the University of Pittsburgh and got a degree in computer science and now work across the street at BNY. Similar to what Cole said, I feel like a lot of people have talked about the community that the DIY has created, so I want to take a second to talk about the impact it's had on my life. In six days, on September 9th, I will be three years sober, and as anyone who has struggled with addiction knows, the isolation that comes with it makes recovery very difficult. And as the physician here can attest to, some of the key factors for successful and prolonged recovery are a strong support system, a good sense of community, and a purpose. And in the early days of my recovery, when it, in the hardest days of my recovery, I found all of those at the Oakland DIY, and specifically through Raul as well. I found myself there nearly every day, eager to help out and not just skate. Raul would text me that I needed to go pick up cinder blocks, or he had some cracks that he wanted me to patch, or there was a concrete pour going on, and I was ecstatic to go and help out as much as possible. And I know everyone here values their free time a lot, we all do, and one of the most amazing things about the DIY that I see is that if AJ posts on his story, "I need 20 guys at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday for a pour," at 9:00 a.m. on a Saturday, you will find 20 people there willing to volunteer their time and help out to make good on a public space. The DIYs had not only a profound impact on my life, but on the community as well. It makes me proud to be in Pittsburgh and so proud of the skate community. I'm grateful to Raul for starting it and to AJ for continuing its legacy on, and I think that it should stay.
Our next speaker is Jean Felipe Lesur.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jean Felipe, and I'm from Brazil, and I grew up in Italy for 23 years, and I'm a skater since, I don't remember. So, yeah, first of all, for my experience in the skateboard world, I'm really thankful for the Italian community, because in Italy, with all my projects, I always had a really big support, and that was super cool for my grow-up. When I got here in America in 2023, I was pretty sad because I don't have friends, and sometimes it's hard to change country, and at Oakland DIY, I found a really, really beautiful environment and actually what I need, build, grow up, know people, skate together, have fun, and enjoy life, skateboard life. So I think we'll be really sad to shut down Oakland DIY, because I had some works too like that, and shut down that would be like shut down hope, dreams, happiness, and that's not cool. So let's keep dreaming, let's keep that up, and let's keep skating, please. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lacey Lesur.
Hello, good morning. You just heard my husband, and I live in Highland Park, I should say. My name is Lacey Pinat Lesur, and skateboarding has brought me a lot of things in my life, but primarily the love of my life. I met Felipe in Italy, actually, at his skate project. He had something similar going on and would teach kids, and there was a community garden, a really beautiful space. And then we ended up having to move to Brazil for, during the pandemic, difficult time, and there we started another little project, renovating skate parks there too, giving free lessons to kids on Thursdays and Saturdays. And I would just like to speak a little bit about some of the benefits that I see from skateboarding, and just, it's a really accessible sport that I don't think has been talked about much yet. You don't need money to skate. Like usually, a lot of the kids piece together their first board from parts from other skaters, so someone will give you like their old deck when they change, or wheels and things like that. So, yeah, it's cool to buy a new board, but if you don't have money, you can just build one from people around, and also you can just go skate, like, anytime. You don't need like a team, although it is very collaborative, but you can, it is like individual and a team sport, so you can go anytime and practice, so it's very accessible for people that don't have a lot of money. And, yeah, you've heard a lot about community, mental health, a lot of these benefits, and I don't know. Just want to say thanks for this opportunity, and I hope that you keep the Oakland DIY alive because it's a really special place. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rachel Thompson.
Hello. I would just like to say, I'm a 35-year resident of Pittsburgh. I'm not a transplant, I'm not new. I grew up in Shadyside, and I- I grew up in Shadyside, um, and I went to Liberty Elementary School, and then I went to Kappa, which is... Um, and as a city kid, I grew up with buses. That's, that's how I got around. I didn't, I didn't have a car. When I turned sixteen, I didn't get my license. I got my license when I was eighteen and went off to college. There aren't other skate parks that you can get to easily on bus. There are very few of them. Um, Polish Hill, which is another DIY, not in as good repair, is accessible by bus. Um, Switch and Signal Skate Park, which is a paid indoor skate park, is accessible by bus. This one, that's kind of it. Um, also, this may sound irrelevant, but recently, the wheel fell off my car. Um, so I'm back on the bus full-time, and as a person who wants to skate, there aren't that many places that I can skate and not get yelled at. Um, additionally, I'm a roller skater. And something that is, that that lovely lady who had a completely different agenda, um, said, uh, there are roller rinks closing left, right, and center. And, um, that's not okay. It's not okay for a variety of reasons, but one of them is pure civic pride. And I posit to you that, um, skate culture is regional, skate styles are regional. And for those of you who feel competitive with the state of Ohio, Columbus has a skate style that people know about outside of Columbus. It's like a known thing. We don't. We don't have a skate style because we have one roller rink and like three skate parks in the city, none of which are official. So here's your opportunity to make this skate park official, to make it accessible and free, and accessible to kids who don't grow up with cars and can't drive out to the suburbs. And to allow us to develop a Pittsburgh style that we can be proud of. Because Pittsburgh skaters aren't worse than skaters in Columbus. But they have their own style, and we don't, because they have the infrastructure and we don't. So I know all of you bleed black and gold, and you like Pittsburgh sports. I sure would like to see us be on the map. Um, and that's a really great opportunity for you. A free place for kids to go and build up a Pittsburgh style that we can all be proud of. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Joseph Ripple.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Joseph. I'm here to speak in support of the Oakland DIY. I'm primarily here as a Yinzzer by birth. I'm almost thirty-eight years old. I skated when I was a kid. Back then, things were very different. Um, anybody that's over thirty probably knows, we were chased out of everywhere. Um, I grew up with, um, I guess I should say, I played sports for a long time, and they got boring quickly, whereas skateboard filled a gap that didn't really scratch any itches that I found anywhere else. Growing up, we didn't have anywhere to go. I grew up with kids, watching them fall victim to drugs, crime, ODing, killing themselves. So it's something that has been very deeply impactful on my life as an important piece, and growing through my experience. My friends that started skateboarding with me, that kind of, although we were treated like criminals because it was seen as some sort of hooligan activity, it really saved our lives. My life changed a lot. I didn't skateboard for over twenty years. I graduated from Margaret Morris, I worked for Heinz. I've traveled all over the world. I've lived in tons of different places. I moved back to Pittsburgh a few years ago, and I got back into skateboarding a few years ago. And I've never come across any place that's been like the Oakland DIY. Uh, we didn't really have many skateboard parks or skate parks in general back in the day. I remember Shady Skates, and that closed down. I think about the first city park that we got, which was McKinley, uh, which when it was built, the polite way of putting it was a death trap. I remember the first week it opened, my friend and I went and skated, and he rolled down the ramp and fell because of the huge crack that has now grown, and broke his arm, and never skated again. And I guess my point in that is that while the city tried to do something about it, we build all these skate parks that are essentially unusable to the point that a community of people have come together to find a space that we can come together and skate, but it's also, as many people have said, it's, it's more than that. To outsiders, it looks like a skate park, it's a community space. You know, we talk about community, inclusion, all of these things. Look at how many people from so very vastly different backgrounds are here today talking about this matter. I guess I'm at time, so I just want to say progress is through community, working together, and finding ways that we can grow and progress. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it, everyone. I just want to say, this is a great, great man.
Our next speaker is Eric Calfo.
Hi, my name's Eric Calfo. I'm thirty-three, and I've lived in the city of Pittsburgh my whole life. I own a skateboard shop called Radio here in Pittsburgh. As a kid, I was someone who always felt like an outsider. I was unsure of who I was, who I could relate to, and where I belonged. That was until I found skateboarding. I took to skateboarding around the year 2000. Shortly after, an indoor skate park had opened, where I made some of the best friends I could ever ask for. Finally, a place that brought kids together who were just like me. We bonded through our love of skateboarding. We grew up together, and we kept each other out of trouble all throughout our adolescence. Almost twenty-five years later, I still have those friends in my life. As we got a little older, we saw concrete skate parks for modernized skateboarding being built in many cities across the world, which brought an influx of positivity and community to those areas. We would dream about what Pittsburgh would one day be like once we finally received the same treatment. Unfortunately, we never did. Skateboarding in Pittsburgh is not easy, given the fact the only two skate parks we have in the city are almost thirty years old and not beginner-friendly. Because of this, I've seen countless kids quit, quit skateboarding out of discouragement of not having an updated and safe place to skate at. And unfortunately, I don't blame them. Without spaces like the Oakland DIY Park, we can lose our entire community. A community with such passion that comes together with our own hard-earned money and makes things happen when others won't, because we know the importance of it. These spaces mean everything, and we deserve more of them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Leah Pretto.
Hello, my name is Leah Pretto, um, and I'm from Florida, and then South Carolina, North Carolina, Colorado, and now here, six years ago. Um, and I have to say, the most inclusive community I've ever met has been the skateboarding community, so it just felt right for me to come and speak up for them. I'd like to talk about why Oakland DIY is a perfect example of people, of the people of Pittsburgh going out of their way to create a crowdfunded community area, free to the public and inclusive to every kind of person from any walk of life. Not only was the creation of this park community led, but those involved continue to organize group cleanups and even crowdfund within the community for repairs. They also host free social events such as themed skate nights and small competitions. Locals even seem to find some joy in watching the sport. A quote from one of my friends that skateboards is, um, "I've had some people stop on their walk and cheer for me whenever I land something." A study from the National Institute of Drug Abuse did a study on fifteen hundred adolescents aged twelve to eighteen from different demographics. That study reported that seventy percent of youth experienced more community engagement due to their sport. I think that in a time where one in seven youth report depression and the internet is becoming overwhelmingly present in our lives, we should be defending local spots that encourage physical activity. From the same study, it was found that eighty-five percent of them reported at least three hours of skateboarding a week, a sport that's been recognized to improve a sense of confidence, ownership, and resilience in children and adults alike. I think that providing a safe place away from cars or pedestrians is beneficial to everyone, and I must note that seeing as the lot was abandoned since as early as 2007, the Five Star Skate Park provides a better example of this growing and vibrant community. With improvements always in the works, I think that the energy and seeing the community come together in this way is never a bad thing. I believe that the skate park provides great benefits to the skaters of Pittsburgh, as well as the Panther Hollow residents. I'm appreciative of my time today, and I hope to see us working together to continue to provide inclusive community spaces organized by our community.
Our next speaker is Nathaniel Ostafi. If not, our next speaker is Reagan Pierce.
Hi. My name is Reagan Pierce, and I'm a twenty-nine-year-old lifelong Pittsburgh resident. I grew up in Panther Hollow, right down the street from the DIY skate park. Um, and I'm also a person of Italian heritage. I'm not a skater, but I wanted to come and speak in support of the Oakland DIY Park because I've seen it impact the community so positively. When I was growing up, me and my brother were at the playground. I used to be there all the time. We were always the only children there. If we wanted to be at a park with community, with other people, we had to go up the stairs across the bridge to the dinosaur playground. And it's really been really inspiring and beautiful to see all these people come together to use this space in a way that I hadn't seen my entire lifetime growing up in Oakland. I have seen people speaking about concerns about noise with skating, and I wanted to, uh... just add that in case anyone here hasn't literally been to the Oakland DIY spot, there's an active railway literally across the street. And I've seen a lot of people talking about how they are respecting the space, not being loud at night, not being there past dark. Over my lifetime, I've seen a lot of new residents join the Pittsburgh community from lots of different places. The population has grown a ton. And there's been, with the increase of population, a huge amount of like new development and a lot of new businesses and like private spaces built for the new community, and there's a lack of open, free spaces in the city. And it's been really beautiful to see this space built, open to the public, free to everyone, welcome to everyone, that has been utilized by so many people in so many walks of life, so many different ages, backgrounds. And I just want to reiterate that I think it would be a huge loss of a community space, of a community effort, and all this support and work to see this skate park go. Yeah, thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Hyde. If you can hear us, Dan, you need to unmute yourself. All right, we'll go to the next speaker, and we can always come back if he left. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Sofello.
Hello, good afternoon, council members and all attending. Let me be the first to say, uh, Happy Riveter's Day. Um, my name is Jeffrey Sofello, and I live downtown. Oakland DIY is basically the only place that I skateboard. I'm speaking today to oppose its removal. I've been skating for probably fifteen years now, and there's quite a lot of precedent of DIY skate parks being officially sanctioned and approved after demonstrating that they can be looked after. Of all the skate parks I've been to, both DIYs and those built with public funds, the Oakland DIY Skate Park is among the cleanest and most welcoming I've ever been to. Many parks have beer cans stuck under the chain-linked fences or dangerous glass shards around, but these are just not issues at Oakland DIY. The last time I was there, it was extremely clean. In my experience, the publicly funded parks often suffer most from these issues because they don't receive the individual attention that the DIY parks do. The Oakland DIY Instagram account testifies to the positive ambitions of the park, reminding visitors to keep it clean and to be good neighbors. I've contributed some of my own time and money into the DIY, and I appreciate the connections with other Pittsburghers that I've made there, especially being a recent transplant myself. It's been an honor to meet the hard-working people that make Oakland DIY possible. I think there are improvements that can be made to the park, better signage, more even pavement for safety, and perhaps even some plywood could be mounted on the chain-linked fences to cut down on any noise, possible noise issues. It's a dynamic space that can meet the needs of its users and neighbors. Simply tearing it down would be a huge mistake. In a time where public spaces are shrinking, I mean, I live downtown, and half of my favorite places are under construction for the NFL Draft next year. I think that the last thing we need is to tear down a public amenity that is seeing active use. The DIY is not, to my knowledge, currently asking for any money from the city, but merely to continue serving the public good for free for the love of skateboarding and the community. The Oakland DIY works with what it has in time and manpower to be the best skate park and community resource it can be. It's so rare these days to have somewhere to hang out for free and meet new people. However, it's easy for us to forget that the skate park exists within the context of the Oakland neighborhood on Boundary Street. And it's important for us to be good neighbors, be mindful that we're lucky to have this DIY to use. Um, I hope that, uh, this hearing will be a good opportunity for us skaters and, uh, visitors to the park to remember that it exists within this neighborhood and that we can meet any residents concerned with its usage, uh, but assure them that it is being looked after. It's very clean, we, we're very respectful. But I think there are improvements we can make, such as signage. Thank you again for your time.
That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Uh, good morning. I'm Jacob Poole, present name Jacob Poole, previous name is Zoltan Joltjakub. I'm in the Pittsburgh area, and, uh, I've been working here for a lot of years. I use a lot of services such as Goodwill Workforce Development, Courier-Link. And, uh, picture children being rounded up and taken to Nazi Germany, and false medical records created for captivity and just played as jokes, and that's how I live here. I was rounded up by American organizations at the outskirts of the Soviet Union outside of Ukraine, in the Yugoslavia wars when America was bombing Yugoslavia in the nineties. I was in a camp with a thousand kids from Ukraine and from Yugoslavia, changed our records, processed to be brought to America alone without our families. I've been here ever since, alone as a child, and now as an adult. I was just, uh, trying to file a citizens complaint with the ADA District Attorney's Office at the magistrate building last Friday, and nothing worked. I'm a joke. I go in there and I say, "These people have been targeting me in Pittsburgh, these organizations. They were able to create false police records to prevent me from going to their events." I go to a lot of events, American Marketing Association, PRSA, public events by University of Pittsburgh, and they just didn't want me to come because that's how people get forced people out of their events. So I went to the District Attorney's Office at the magistrate building, and they laughed at me. They literally wrote on a sticky note, "Denied." And that's the process. This two young girls sitting lower, at lower level where their shirts were exposed, sexually harassed me, forcing me to look at their genitals, wrote petition denied on a sticky note, and that's the process. How ridiculous is that? This is like Nazi Germany. Imagine being taken to a foreign country alone as a kid, falsified medical records, being held captive for thirty-five years. You are not allowed to go to events. People create false police reports, false police records to prevent you from going to public places. I'm not alone. The Pittsburgh area has nearly fifty Eastern European churches. And each one of them has thousands of people and children brought here like I was, enforced captivity, falsified names, documents, being held captive. And things exist. Right now... Right now, I have falsified documents preventing me from going to University of Pittsburgh events because they just didn't want me to come. And I went to the ADA's office, magistrate building, the district attorney's office to file a complaint and this, this people sexually harassed me by forcing me to look at their upper genital areas. They had them exposed, they enforced me to look down at them, and they wrote on a sticky note, petition denied. No appeal process, no avenue for recourse. This is worse than Nazi Germany. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Emmy Zero. I'm a resident of Bloomfield, where I have lived for about 10 or 15 years and also work at the only dedicated roller skate shop in Pennsylvania. In my capacity there, I build and sell skates as well as help run community events and teach beginner skaters. I've been skating for over 25 years. And when I first started in the late 90s, skate parks and the skate community was not particularly welcoming, especially to beginners, to women, to people. Roller skaters or inliners, fruit booters, we were called at the time. And in my personal and professional life, I encounter a lot of people like me, beginners who are adults, women, queer or trans, and they remember the bad old days and are intimidated about starting as adults and going to the skate park. They think that they need to have been skating for 15 years since they were kids in order to show their face. And I never hesitate to recommend Oakland DIY as a place that they can go for a supportive, inclusive environment at whatever skill level they're starting at, as well as being a park of some of the highest quality, higher than even the professional, we built parks that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's David Tessitore, Banksville, District Two, City Council. I am excited to see this level of involvement in bottom-up governments, which is exactly what this is an example of. I spent over 40 years working to encourage this sort of thing, organizing communities within the area, and it is very encouraging to see these people involved. I hope strongly that they will continue their involvement beyond just this one interest because it is so important, having uncovered massive issues of fraud which have affected this city, such as the collapse of the Fern Hollow Bridge when money was taken away from governance of that at the regional level. And this is very important to continue on. It's also interesting that this is a parks issue, which is what I came to address today in that I am encouraging people who wish to get involved with the Sheridan Park, which is the largest traditional park in our district. And so we are having another workday to follow on the one we had about 10 days ago where we got started. And this time, we want to continue on with that. We got a good head start into it. There's much more work to be done. We hope to get more involved from residents in the area. And so, and the other thing I would like to say is that next week I expect to be in here to talk about an issue called a community advisory team process, which is to encourage people such as these who have been here today to get involved in other issues in the community. I'd also like to point out that what we've seen as a controversy grow here is a outgrowth of a structural deficit, which this city has had before, I think any of you on council have been on council, that was started back in the 90s when, up until that time, parks were administered through the Parks Department. It was all the Parks Department. A lot of this controversy would have been eliminated if we had that. Instead, what we did is we bifurcated the administration of the parks by having Public Works take over and getting rid of the maintenance crews that were part of the Parks Department. Then we divided off again with the Conservancy taking on, and now we have a trifurcated system. We need to go back to making parks in charge and control of and operations of parks to avoid this in the future. That's what this council needs to do. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Javon F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street, Beffert Avenue. You see the big tall apartment building? That's where I live at. I'm an advocate for children, youth, family, hospital workers, the homeless and the elderly. I want to address to this whole group of people, this is the first time I've seen many of you, but I want you to understand that what we citizens, and I don't live in this area, but I don't understand how is it that Mrs. Harwick was able to okay this park that just had. And the reason why I'm questioning is this. If you made that park there with that skateboard, I'm an elderly citizen and you make a lot of noise with that skateboard, like you have some of you saying how you went and it made you feel better. When did you go? Two or three o'clock at night?
Please address council, Ms. Brown.
Two or three, two or three o'clock at night? I'm talking to them because they came here to talk to us, so they should hear me too. And I'm wondering, how is it that they can come and make a skateboard place in that area? There's a lot of elderly. The reason why I'm saying this, I lived in California, my son is dead, but he had a skateboard he brought back from California. But in California, they had places that you took the skateboard. You weren't around the neighbors, you weren't around homes where older people were trying to sleep, and those skateboards make a lot of noise. And then you fall and you holler and you're laughing. I was trying to explain to the president, up in our neighborhood, they have taken a school that had been for the pregnant girls and they made it into homes, apartments, 60 apartments, it's going to be 90, but they have nowhere for the children to play. There's nowhere for them to socialize. So they come on Beffert Avenue. That's where I live, a corner. They're out there with grills, all that smokes going into homeowners. You have to realize, you enjoy the skating, but what about the homeowners that have been there for years? And all of a sudden, all that noise. I know, because when I lived in California, they had those places for them, the kids to go and play. We don't have them here, but I don't believe if you didn't do it for Sheridan, is that where you work, that's what you take care of, Ms. Harwick? No, you don't, you don't have nothing to do with that park at all? Well, no, you don't, I don't understand how you got over there in their neighborhood. That's what I'm questioning. She lives somewhere else. I mean, she takes care of a different district, so how does she get over in this neighborhood? That's all I'm questioning. The old people want to know. The elderly that's been living there for years, how did you just come with all that noise? And I will speak up because I was a homeowner at one time, until my home went down, they had promised they was going to help. Okay, I'm gone. I just want you to understand, think about the old people.
Next speaker, please.
I've come before City Council six times since July 15th to raise the issue of the outrageously illegal skate park in Panther Hollow. I trust that you have given those words your most serious thought and consideration. My theme throughout my testimonies has simply been for council members to awaken your dignity because when dignity is fully awake, this issue becomes easy to resolve. The devaluation of dignity was the origin of this ill-conceived skate park when no notice was given, thereby not respecting the dignity of the Panther Hollow residents and our Italian heritage. To have Councilmember Barbara Warwick justify the devaluation of dignity by saying the skate park was not in use shows a lack of respect for her own dignity. Panther Hollow residents were never asked, "What do you want in your playground?" That would have been respecting the dignity of the host community. Two days ago, I forwarded to council members an email from the grandfather of a skateboarder who challenged me to a fight. That wasn't the first email that I received of that kind. Certainly, that is not coming from someone whose dignity is fully awake. On the same day, a property in our neighborhood was tagged with graffiti, that also is not from someone whose dignity is fully awake. Some residents are now concerned that if they come before you to speak, they will be retaliated against and their homes vandalized. The official naming of our playground as Oakland DIY Skate Park on June 17th is symbolic of the wrongdoing surrounding this skate park. Again, neither I nor others received any notice about the naming. Councilmember Warwick knows how to reach me because she sent me an email on April 4th to knock on doors with her and Mayor Ed Gany in the primary election. Yet two months later, she never sent me an email that the playground that has been in our neighborhood for nearly 60 years would not have Panther Hollow in its name. Skateboarders and Councilmember Warwick and their own lack of dignity are now telling Panther Hollow residents that we should simply live with the continuous noise of skateboards crashing onto the ground within the sanctuary of our own homes for the rest of our lives. Shut down the playground, remove the illegal skate park, and build two bocce courts in a playground area that would be in better harmony with our neighborhood and our Italian heritage. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. There being no further speakers, just for the, what'd you say? Just for the public's edification, council members don't respond to public comment. If they choose to respond to public comment, we do so at the end of meetings. However, given that 52 of you chose to come here this morning to address council, I do want to afford Councilman Warwick the opportunity to give her remarks prior to you leaving. Oh, there's another speaker. I apologize. Go right ahead.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the time. My name is Forrest. I live in Regent Square. I've been skateboarding most of my life and a big part of the reason I stayed in Pittsburgh after going to school here is because of skateboarding. And mostly, I just want to address the past two speakers. I think everybody else summed up what skateboarding is, what community is, and what, you know, sort of magical thing it is for everybody really well. But to address the other things, I think parks should be in proximity to homes. That's how they're walkable, that's how we don't have transportation deficit and people can actually get around. I think that the noise is actually probably overstated in how loud it is. I don't think that's super factual as the gentleman earlier articulated very well. And largely, I think, I think it's nothing but a positive thing, and you've heard nothing but positive things from everybody present, except for, I guess, what you would call the opposition or the plaintiffs. So, yeah, I just wanted to be known that we're here to have a good time, the hollering and the shouting and those things, that's the sound of fun, that's the sound of joy, that's the sound of people enjoying their lives. And we hope that you allow us to continue to do so and keep the Oakland DIY where it is. Thanks very much.
Are there any further speakers? If not, Councilman Warwick.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry to have to be this way and not be able to address you directly. I want to really thank everybody for coming out today, truly. This is remarkable. You know, I do want to start by saying that, you know, this is a hard one for me because I got to this council starting with a fight against the Mon Oakland Connector, which was a fight that was really launched by Mr. Giampolo, right? And his family, for generations, have been wonderful stewards of the Panther Hollow community. And Carlino is a community advocate. He really, really is. And for decades, he has been standing up to the gradual eating away of his community by the universities in Oakland. And I understand that, right? It's something that we see, you know, these sort of university towns. That said, and I think one of the speakers mentioned it, I think it is clear, and in fact, it's so much clearer to me now since hearing all of you speak, that this is not, this is not Pitt or CMU gobbling up part of our public parks. That is not what this is. This is young people who have come to, you know, whether they're Pittsburgh natives or moved to Pittsburgh, who have come to Pittsburgh, making Pittsburgh their home and seeing a vacant space and making something out of that space, the same way you would with a community garden or, you know, any other type of, you know, local community you'd do with a vacant lot. It's really impressive. And I will say, as a resident of Four Mile Run, and I literally jog by this space every morning, and I walk with my kids to and from Oakland at least three times a week, over the years, we have seen this skate, this skate park evolve, right? Go from just like a few clearly like just temporary, you know, I don't know, I don't skate, but, and the thing that I also want to underscore is our DPW team, so, you know, our head of Shenley Park, who is a former skater himself and also grew up in this neighborhood as an Italian-American heritage, you know, sort of saw that this was happening, that this was starting to be built, and rather than saying, which, you know, the city of Pittsburgh really could have just come in and said, "No, stop. That's it. You can't do this here." Right? This is city property, you can't do this here. Instead of doing that, our DPW team was like, "Wow, this is so cool. Let's help make this happen. Let's help make it safe and better." And for what it's worth, I know talking to Gary, he loves to tell me, he loves, and I know he loves to tell you too, AJ, that if there's ever any vulgar graffiti or if I ever see any garbage on this playground, I'm ripping it down, right? Like, he loves to say that because he takes pride and his crews take pride in this space and he knows that you do too. And, you know, he's proud of the work that you do and you all should be proud of the work that you do. And, you know, for Carlino, I really, I have to say, and I know that we have talked about this, you approached me, you know, in the morning as I'm coming through the neighborhood, I am more than happy to sit down and talk about, you know, I mean, again, my initial suggestion was the Panther Hollow DIY skate park, right? To preserve the Panther Hollow and also, and I love the idea of a bocce court, and I've heard some ideas of like plaques and talking about the history. I mean, all of this is, all of these are great ideas and I really, I really hope that after hearing all this testimony, it has become clearer that this is not a takeover. This is a, this is, this is community growing from the bottom up. And Pittsburgh, you know, we need, and nothing ever stays the same, but to have young people like this coming and investing their time and their like this coming and investing their time and their sweat and their love in our public spaces, I think is something that we should be proud of, and I think that as older folks, we should be encouraging. So, thank you again to everybody. Thank you, Carlino, for all the work you do in Panther Hollow. I see you out there on the weekends, cleaning up trash, picking up litter. I know the work that you do, and I appreciate the work that you do. And I hope that we can all, you know, come together and celebrate each other and celebrate this space. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. So, we will now turn to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Charland.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness. Councilman Charland, thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2184, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter into a License Agreement or Agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Plaza at Grandview Owners Association, Cost Not to Exceed $105,600 Over Five Years. Bill 2186, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Accept a Donation from Community Family Advocates in the Amount of $483,300 to Support the City of Pittsburgh's Co-Response and Downtown Policing Programs. And Bill 2187, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Western Pennsylvania Regional Urban Search and Technical Rescue Team to Administer the Type III Urban Search and Rescue Task Force Established in Pennsylvania Act 113 of 2024, for a Total Not to Exceed Amount of $4,480,727.
A waiver of Rule 8 has been requested for Bill 2187. Is someone willing to offer?
Motion to waive Rule 8 on Bill 2187 so that it appears on this afternoon's Standing Committee Agenda.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 2187 will be on this afternoon's Standing Committee Agenda. That moves us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting, Chair, excuse me, of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2175, Resolution Amending Resolution 628 of 2024, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements and Amendments thereto with Vision Point Systems to Obtain Twilio Flex Support Services with the General Objective of Retaining VPS to Provide Exceptional and Reliable Services for Our Call Centers by Increasing the Approved Amount by $32,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $48,000 over three years. Bill 2185, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Roll Call Technologies LLC for a Web-Based Secondary Employment Scheduling System, Amount Not to Exceed $85,392 and 12 Cent over five years. And Bill Number 2190, Resolution Amending Resolution 489 of 2024, which Authorize the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter into an Agreement with Information Age Technologies, Inc., for the Co-Pilot Annual Subscription Fee for the Healthy Active Living Senior Center Software by Including the Negotiated Fee Amounts for Two and Three Year, Two and Three of the Three-Year Term and Increasing the Cost by $52,690 for New Cost Not to Exceed $73,690.
And Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 2181, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into a Cooperation Agreement with Pittsburgh Regional Transit for Construction and Post-Construction Access and Maintenance of a Certain Area Within and Along the East Busway Ramp Adjacent to the Intersection of 26th Street and Liberty Avenue Located within the Second Ward City of Pittsburgh for Purposes of the Liberty Avenue Highway Safety Improvement Project at No Cost to the City.
And Councilwoman Kell Smith, Chair of Recreation Youth and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 2188, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an Agreement or Agreements with the Allegheny County Department of Human Services for the City's Operation of Its Senior Community Centers. Said Agreement or Agreement shall be for a Term of One Year at No Cost to the City with Compensation to the City Not to Exceed $785,709. Bill 2189, Resolution Amending Resolution 32, Effective January 29, 2025, which Authorize the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter into Agreements in Individual Amounts of $10,000 or Less with Performers, Instructors, Artists, Referees, and Persons with Specialized Skills in Connection with the Department's Recreational and Instructional Programs and Special Event Services by Clarifying the Payment Methods that May Be Used for Said Expenses. Bill 2191, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Board of Public Education for the Purpose of Providing Meals in Connection with the 2025-2026 Food Service Program. The Total Cost Shall Not Exceed $150,000 Over One Year. Bill 2194, Resolution Submitting the Recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to Name the Playground Within Townsend Park, the Bill Coleman Memorial Playground. Bill 2195, Resolution Submitting the Recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to Rename Herschel Field to Bessie Miller Field. Bill 2196, Resolution Submitting the Recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to Rename the Baseball Softball Field at Banksville Park from Tower Field to Bill Mullen Field. And Bill 2197, Resolution Authorizing Council's Consent to an Extension Pursuant to NAD 2205D of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances of the Deadline for the Planning Commission to Act on Council Bill 2025-1925 and 2025-1926.
Councilwoman Kell Smith, Bill 2197 is your consent for an extension at the Planning Commission? If you would like, we can do a roll call vote on that bill now.
Yeah, I would. Is it okay?
Okay.
Mr. Charland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. Bill 2197 has passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, presenting the Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2174, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable to Regional Opportunity Sender, Join Businesses Vibrant Pittsburgh for Annual Membership Dues in the Amount of $50,000 Payable in 2025.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2172, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Public Works, and the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into a Lease Agreement or Lease Agreement with Pittsburgh Center for the Arts and Media for the Use of the SCAFE Residence and the SCAFE Annex Marshall Garage for a Period of 20 Years and an Annual Rental Fee of $1 per Year. Bill 2176, Resolution Granting a Vacation of Mulberry Way at 20-Foot Right-of-Way from 12th Street to 13th Street, No Cost to the City, Second Ward, First Council District. Bill 2177, Resolution Granting a Vacation of East General Robinson Street and Goodwood Street at No Cost to the City in the 23rd Ward, First Council District, City of Pittsburgh. Bill 2178, Resolution Granting a Vacation of Casino Way at 15-Foot Right-of-Way from North Homewood Avenue and Zenith Way, No Cost to the City, 13th Ward, 8th Council District. Bill 2179, Resolution Granting unto Almino LP, Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense at No Cost to the City. Foundation Footings and Foundation Drain at 4612 Lytle Street in 5th Ward, 5th Council District. Bill 2180, Resolution Granting unto Carnegie Mellon University, Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense at No Cost to the City. SOE Walls, a Nitrogen Tank, Remote Filling Station, Concrete Pad, Stormwater Vault, Two Storm Manholes, and Cleanout Curbs, Generator Pad, A Small Portion of Generator Screaming Fence, Water Meter Vaults, Retaining Walls, Ticket Gate, Tree Planters, and Stone Seating Landscape Features at 4664 Forbes Avenue, 4th Ward, 8th Council District. Bill 2182, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with CDR Maguire, Inc., for Project Design Management Services and Reviews in Connection with Various City of Pittsburgh Projects to Add Funding for the Preliminary Engineering Phase, Increasing the Total Not to Exceed $3,778,601 and 20 Cent, An Increase of $67,344 and 47 Cent, reimbursable at 95%. Bill 2183, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of ACV Environmental Services, Inc., in the Amount of $13,729 and 41 Cent, for Hazmat Services to Remediate Hydraulic Fuel Spills from Environmental Services Vehicles, and Providing for the Payment of the Cost thereof in 2025. And Bill 2198, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title II, Fiscal Article V, Special Funds, Chapter 236, Workforce Development Fund, by Amending Section 23601, Establishment of the Workforce Development Fund, to Allow the Department of Human Resources to Manage and Direct the Fund with the Office of Management and Budget, and Section 23603, Priorities to Create Additional Allowable Uses of the Fund's Assets.
Councilwoman Warwick, I believe on Bill 2183, there's a request to waive Rule 8.
Oh, yep. Motion to waive Rule 8 to hear 2183 this afternoon.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill 2183 will be on this afternoon's Standing Committee Agenda. Next is Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development. He has no papers. I have four.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 2171, Resolution Appointment of James Eesh as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board, with a Term to Expire April 30th, 2029.
I'm trying to get my own mind. There's two that are appointments. Let's do this.
Bill Number 2193, Resolution Authorizing the Reappointment of Kimberly D. Clark Baskin as City Clerk of the City of Pittsburgh for a Three-Year Term to Expire September 6, 2028.
So, we have the two appointments. What is members' pleasure? Either motion to interview or to approve?
They can interview us. They've been here longer than we have.
No, I certainly, I certainly expect us to approve the clerk, but the other one is for the...
Housing Opportunity Fund.
Housing Opportunity Fund. It appears members are okay with approving these, so we have the motion to approve.
I'm never okay with them, but I know I'm also not here for the interviews so much that I'm...
All right. Is someone willing to offer a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, yours I'm okay with. I shouldn't have said my dad's clerk.
And now can we do the two appointments? Communication, excuse me.
Bill 2192, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grants Office for the Week Ended August 29, 2025. And Bill 2201, Communication from Furman A. Maurice the Fourth, Fleet Services Manager, Office of Management and Budget, Submitting the City of Pittsburgh's Fleet Efficiency Report in accordance with 49303 of the Code of Ordinances dated September 2025.
Need a motion to be received and filed.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Two bills have been ready, received, and filed. Our next order of business is reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, presenting the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Committee on Finance and Law, Bill Number 2167, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for August 27, 2025, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2096, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title I Administrative, Article IX, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Chapter 178A, Youth Commission and Youth Council, by Strengthening the Commission's Alignment with the City of Pittsburgh's Structure to Ensure That It Reflects the Diversity of Young People Across All Neighborhoods and Communities, Thus Prioritizing the Lived Experiences of Pittsburgh's Youth to Inform the Decisions of the City's Elected Leadership. Bill 2097, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title I Administrative, Article IX, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Chapter 179G, LGBTQIA+ Commission, to Strengthen the Worth of the Commission by Ensuring a Dedicated Staffer Will oversee the Commission's Recruitment, Budget, Recommendations, and Event Planning. Bill 2098, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales, Items A through N, 3300 Webster Avenue, District 6, 0 Dairy Street, District 9, 0 Lincoln Avenue, District 9, 2 Oakwood Place, District 9, 1617 Sterling Street, District 3, 1109 Braybeck Street, District 1, 0 Egger Street, District 1, 1136 South Side Avenue, District 1, 0 McClure Avenue, District 1, 3302 Fleming Avenue, District 1, 3300 Fleming Avenue, District 1, 1117 Acacia Lane, District 1, 0 Charles Street, District 3. Bill 2099, Resolution Repealing an Item in Resolution Number 675 of 2022, Effective Date December 2, 2022, in Order to Rescind the Sale. Bill 2100, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Finance to Accept Deeds Conveying All Right Title and Interest in Parcels 46E44 and 46E46, Located at 2716 North Charles Street into 26th Ward, 6th Council District to the City of Pittsburgh, to Advance the Fowler Park Master Plan and Authorizing the Payment of $1 in Exchange for the Parcels. Bill 2119, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 797 of 2017, Effective December 28, 2017, in Title, Resolution Adopting and Improving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program to Decrease Park Reconstruction by $54,683 and 26 Cent and Increase Facility Improvements, Sports Facilities by $54,683 and 26 Cent. And Bill Number 2128, Resolution Transferring the Amount of $9,000 Within the 2025 Operating Budget from City Council District Supplies Postage to the Department of Public Works, Bureau of Operations Supplies, Operational Supplies for the Purpose of Purchasing Litter Cans in Council District 4.
You have heard the reading and entitled the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passing of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a leading party number of votes is fast family. That moves us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, presenting the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2168, Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for August 27, 2025, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1531, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter into a Clinical Affiliation Agreement with the Community College of Allegheny County to Enact a Precepting Program, Allowing Students to Learn Professional Skills From City Employees in the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services for Training and Educational Purposes at No Cost to the City.
at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presenting the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2169. Reported a committee on land use and economic development for August 27th, 2025 with affirmative recommendation. Bill 1214. Bill 2024-1214. Ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IX Zoning Code, Article 5 Use Regulations, Chapter 911, Primary Uses, Section 91102 Use Table, by adding a new use, interim housing, and supplementing Section 91104 Use Standards by adding standards for the same.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. And finally, Councilman Cory Mosley, presenting the Committee of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 2170. Reported a committee on intergovernmental and educational affairs for August 27th, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2094. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 933 Penn Avenue at no cost to the city. Bill 2118. Ordinance authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Borough of Mount Oliver with regard to the city providing emergency medical services to the borough pursuant to the General Local Government Code for a total compensation of eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars over five years.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Anything from members? Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. Just briefly, I just wanted to, um, mention the passing of Mr. Mahoney. He was a firefighter for a long time, retired from Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire. His wife was the supervisor for the Pittsburgh Public Schools Lunch Program at Westwood. They're lifelong residents of, um, Ridgemont in my district. And just their whole, whole family does so much for our community. But he passed away. Um, his, his last wish was he wanted to go on vacation. His daughter took him away on vacation and he passed away on the anniversary of he and his wife, Annette. Their 59th wedding anniversary, he passed away. So, I just want to wish, you know, the family our condolences. Um, but I would like to, next week, to give a moment of silence once the firefighters can maybe come in for that. Is that okay? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from members? Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out to the organizers of Homewood Island. Um, this past Sunday, they had another wonderful gathering and festivities, uh, for the whole family. Um, so, you know, Bernard, Amber, uh, Twan, and everyone. Uh, you know, my apologies for anybody I, I forgot, uh, you know, Mr. Ernie Bay. Um, but they, you know, through sweat equity and through their own, you know, vision and innovation has pulled together, what I think is going to become, you know, a signature end of the summer event, um, on that side of town. So, I'm always, you know, glad to support, glad to participate. But again, I think it's just, you know, part of the positive transformation that's happening at Homewood by the folks who are from Homewood that either continue to live in Homewood or live in a close neighborhood, but are committed to transforming that community, you know, and bringing it back, you know, to the greatness that makes it one of our city's great neighborhoods. So, you know, kudos and look forward, you know, to the, the third annual Homewood Island, uh, next September.
Thank you. Anything else from members?
Can I just, can I just say one more thing? I just wanted to congratulate the clerk, um, and thank her for all the work that, that you've done and your office has done. I mean, through the pandemic, through, you know, different leadership changes, through all the different, you know, things that have been happening in the city. Your office has been steady and, and, and very much available for us. I just want to thank you for your leadership and for everything that you've done. And I apologize if I confused my comments before.
No, no, you're good. Um, two quick things. It's currently 1:13, it looks like. If members are okay to allow yourself some time to get something to eat as well as allow them to reset the cameras. If you're all okay, we'll push the meeting back to 2 o'clock as opposed to 1:30? Okay. Um, and then, and we may want to make this announcement when we, at the beginning of the standing committee meeting. Currently, there are about thirty-five people registered to speak. I believe the vast majority of which are coming to speak on Cop City, but that bill is going to be held. And so, we may want to alert them on the front end so that they don't necessarily feel compelled to use all of their three minutes, although they still have, certainly have that right. Um, so with that being said, our meeting announcement is this afternoon at 2 o'clock. Council will hold our standing committee meeting. Speaker Registration, well, closes at 1:00, actually. Um, so, that's it. Uh, motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting. Excuse, excuse the absent member, sorry.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.